Please welcome our mayor, Buddy Dyer.
Good afternoon, I'm Mayor Buddy Dyer and I'd like to welcome you to the February 25th, 2013 meeting of the Orlando City Council. We're going to begin today's proceedings with the invocation offered today by District Three Commissioner Robert Stewart. If you would all please join me in standing at the conclusion of the invocation. Commissioner Ortiz will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let's pray. God may pause here in these chambers to remember you, to remember your guidance, to remember your love, and to remember your compassion. And as we look at those things ahead of us, we ask that you will bless this council and bless this mayor, and give us the same guidance, same compassion, and same wisdom. Or we pause also to remember those that are in harm's way as we speak, our own city's first responders, and those across the world that protect us for our freedoms. It's to them that we lift a special blessing up right now. And God, we thank you for this great city. Thank you that it continues to be a lighthouse, but most importantly, Lord, that it continues to be led by some strong leaders who've decided that service above self. With these things, we ask in your holy name, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation on the god indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll call the meeting to order. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll and make a determination of a quorum, please?
Commissioner Gray?
Here.
Commissioner Ortiz?
Here.
Commissioner Stewart?
Here.
Commissioner Sheehan?
Here.
Commissioner Linham?
Here.
Commissioner Ings?
Here.
Mayor Dyer?
Here.
Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Let's take up for consideration the workshop agenda review and city council meeting minutes from February 2013. Motion to approve by Commissioner Ings, second by Commissioner Ortiz. All in favor of the motion indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? And so the motion carries. That brings us right into awards, presentations, and recognitions, and we will be recognizing the 25th anniversary of the International Drive Resort Area Chamber of Commerce. I'd like to call on Maria Triscari, President and CEO. Maria?
I want you to go ahead and speak.
Come on up. My notes say that you will introduce members of your board, and then I will read a proclamation.
Terrific, okay. I do want to introduce my Board of Directors here and ask them to come up. Our Chairman, Kim Pranowitz with Fifth Third Bank is our chairman this year. Steven Segarra with SeaWorld is a board member. Bill Jones with Best Western. Dan Donovan with Universal Studios Orlando.
Thank you for joining us.
And Jeff, I'm sorry, Jeff Dolly with The Hyatt Place, and Mark Bresson with Fun Spot Action Park.
So I have a proclamation. Whereas represented in a myriad of hotels, restaurants, attractions, and retail shops, the International Drive Resort Area Chamber of Commerce is celebrating its 25th anniversary. And whereas the International Drive Resort Area Chamber of Commerce represents over 100-plus hotels, 485-plus retail outlets, 200-plus restaurants, 17-plus attractions, six of the world's greatest theme parks, and whereas the chamber represents over 32,000 employees, and whereas through the leadership of the chamber's beautification committee and its partnership with Orange County and the city of Orlando, new ordinances have been adopted to enhance the International Drive Resort Area, and whereas in part through the leadership of the International Drive Resort Area Chamber of Commerce and our tourism community, Orlando can proudly proclaim itself as the number-one tourist destination in the world. Now therefore, we, Mayor Buddy Dyer and Samuel B. Ings, Mayor Protem, Orlando City Commissioner, District Six, do hereby proclaim Monday, February 25th, 2013, as International Drive Resort Area Chamber of Commerce Day in the city of Orlando.
Thank you.
is going to do the introduction and the summary of the campaign. The other co-chairs are Deputy Chief Pigman, Deputy Chief McCormick, and Rosa, our Chief Information Officer.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Commissioners. If I could get the co-chairs to stand, the ones that aren't already, I'd appreciate it. Rob Pigman and Rosa. On behalf of the Workplace Giving co-chairs, we'd like to thank every employee for their generous contribution and participation in the 2013 campaign. We'd also like to recognize the city support team, which included Mayor Dyer, Byron Brooks, and the CAO's office, all of the division coordinators, I think we had 60 or 61 of them, Michelle Brennan and the Office of Communications and Neighborhood Relations, especially Rob Spindler's assistants with last-minute graphics, Sonia Robinson and all of the OPD volunteers who spearheaded the open house and associated meal planning. Let's see, the Amway Center in Lew Gardens for hosting our Workplace Giving events, Ray Elwell and Vince Augburn for emceeing the open house, Martin Carmody who provided weekly reports to us, and our architect of the Workplace Giving website, Roberto Lopez, Angelo Roman who provided event photography, and Peg Wizik for all the support she provided to the co-chairs. And as always, Rob, John, and I appreciate Rosa's help. She threatens to retire, but we're not going to let her. One of the first things that we noted at the beginning of our 2012 campaign last year was the fact that our level of participation, while good, could have been better. For 2013, we proposed to increase our level of participation from last year's goal of 35% to 40%. Byron challenged us to increase this goal to 45%, and we also had a challenging monetary goal of raising $425,000. The great news is, we exceeded that goal by raising $456,160, and our participation was almost half, 49%. Our monetary increase was 7% over last year's, and our participation increase was 14%. And just to give you an idea, there's a nearby jurisdiction that has three times the employees that we do. Their giving was $20,000 less than ours, and their participation was less than half of ours. So we did a really great job. See, of our employees, 164 employees pledged 1% or more of their salary, and of those, 65% gave between 1% and 1.5% of their salary. 33 employees gave between 1.5% and 2%, and 66 employees gave more than 2% of their salary. We'd also like to recognize the city's creativity and innovation in fundraising. Over $30,000 was raised through events ranging from FPR's golf and tennis tournaments to the holiday workspace decorating contest hosted by the Office of the Mayor, Communications and Neighborhood Relations, and the Office of the City Commissioners. And if you visited the eighth floor, you saw that the competition was pretty intense up there. There were also raffles, silent auctions, bake sales, a rummage sale, and incentives for employees to have jeans days. Before we go into the numbers and details for our departments, we'd like to acknowledge our charity organizations and present them with oversized checks. Of the nine charity organizations, Heart of Florida United Way, America's Charities, Community Health Charities of Florida, Independent Charities of America, Local Independent Charities of America, Earth Share, United Arts of Central Florida, Global Impact, and Neighbor of the Nation, I believe we have three representatives here, if they could come forward. Bob Haight from Heart of Florida United Way, Donna Chan, America's Charities, and is it Kelly Lesparance from Community Health Charities of Florida. And if Darlene Moore and Carolyn Turner are here, if you could come forward, that would be great. So I guess we've got just the three. McCormick will be doing that.
Okay, finally, we'd like to recognize the departments and offices that have gone the furthest in achieving and exceeding either their monetary goal or their participation goal. It's broken down into three categories: large departments, medium-sized departments, and small departments. We'll bring the large departments up first. If Rick Howard, Director of Public Works, would come down, and John Miller, Fire Chief, would come down. Public Works achieved 110% of their monetary goal, and the Orlando Fire Department achieved 171% of its participation goal. And for medium-sized departments, if Lisa Early from Family Parks and Recreation Director could come down, and Brooke Bonnet, Economic Development Director. Family Parks and Recreation achieved 215% of its monetary goal, and Economic Development achieved 186% of the participation goal. And next, for the small departments, if Alan Johnson could come down, Director of the Venues, and Linda Ryan Smith, Interim Housing Division Manager, could come down. Venues achieved 185% of its monetary goal, and Housing and Community Development achieved 183% of participation goal. And just in closing, we'd like to thank everyone for all their efforts that they made in making this the most successful Workplace Giving year ever.
That is pretty outstanding in terms of the participation. Donna just leaned over and said there's a national study that came out, and that we did a lot better than the corporate world did in terms of percentage of employees that are actually participating. So way to go, city employees, in supporting your community. All right, Manny is next up, our Manager of the Office of Emergency Management, to present an overview regarding American Red Cross Month. Manny?
Mayor, Commissioner, good afternoon. March is the American Red Cross Month, and for the last 130 years, the American Red Cross has been dedicated to providing relief to victims of disaster, helping people prevent, prepare for, and respond to emergency all across the United States. It's no different here in the city of Orlando. Their dedicated and compassionate volunteers selflessly change lives around the clock, responding to many disasters year-round, including numerous home fires every day. A rich tradition and dedication to our community lives within the American Red Cross. They are part of our community, they are always there to answer the call, they are always there to lend a helping hand. I am proud to say that the American Red Cross of Mid-Florida is one of our key disaster response partners. They are also a strong advocate of disaster preparedness and public outreach. Over the years, we have partnered in many disasters' preparedness efforts, and will continue to do so. We have a united front when it comes to community preparedness. It is reassuring to know that the American Red Cross has a great presence in our community. In the last couple of weeks, we have had the opportunity to renew our partnership. The American Red Cross leadership has visited the emergency operations center, have had the opportunity to meet with Fire Chief John Miller and with Mayor Buddy Dyer, and today they are here. Once again, congratulations to the American Red Cross and the American Red Cross Month, and I'll leave you with Karen Hagan, Regional CEO of the Mid-Florida Region.
Thank you. Thank you, Manny. Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, it is a privilege to be here and stand before you. The American Red Cross has been serving Orlando since 1917, so that's 96 years. I am not new to the Red Cross. I'm a 28-year veteran, if you will, of the organization, but I'm new to Orlando. But what a privilege to be here, what a humanitarian city this is. Thank you for your leadership. I am so excited to get to know all of you and serve with you side by side. Thank you, Manny. Thank you, Mr. Miller. This is just the beginning of some great things as we stand before you, because we know there will not be a time where we won't have disasters, or we won't have war, or we won't have personal emergencies. So we look forward to continuing our service together and to this wonderful community. Thank you.
City of Orlando proclamation, whereas the American Red Cross was founded in 1881 by Claire Barton, a woman selflessly devoted to the needs of humanity, and whereas chartered and authorized by Congress to act in times of need, the Red Cross provides relief to victims of disasters, helps people prevent, prepare for, and respond to emergencies, and whereas the American Red Cross of Central Florida was established in 1917, and whereas more than 900 Red Cross volunteers from Central Florida responded to 625 local disasters and numerous national disasters last year, providing food, clothing, shelter, medications, recovery planning, and mental health support. And whereas last year, the American Red Cross of Central Florida trained 19,860 people in life-saving CPR, which is a subject we're dealing with here at the city of Orlando, in the use of AEDs, first aid, and aquatic life-saving procedures, and whereas in March of 1943, President Franklin Delano Roosevelt called upon the American people to rededicate themselves to the aims and activities of the Red Cross. Now therefore, I, Buddy Dyer, Mayor of the city of Orlando, do hereby proclaim the month of March 2013 as American Red Cross Month in the city of Orlando. We'd like to highlight our city employees when they have done something compelling and above the ordinary, and I'm going to call on both Chief Miller and Chief Rooney to make this recognition.
Thank you, Mayor, City Commissioners. Let me bring up Officer Jonathan Mills at this time. And I would like to acknowledge his whole family's here, it looks like, and that's nice. His family members as well, if you could just stand up. Thanks for being here and support. I'm just going to introduce him, and I'm going to have Chief John Miller tell you the story, but Jonathan Mills is a fairly new officer. And I'll tell you one thing, I see his name come across my desk for a good reason, on a weekly basis. I mean, he's the drug dealer's worst nightmare. He's out there catching burglars and bad guys all the time. And at this point, I'll just turn over to Chief Miller.
Good afternoon. Just want to tell you, like Chief Rooney said, and the mayor, about recognizing other employees in the city, and I've got an email shortly after this event. I'll read you the event. "On February 3rd at about 8:30 PM, Orlando Police Officer Jonathan Mills was on routine patrol when he encountered a gentleman who began having difficulty breathing and ultimately lost consciousness. Officer Mills determined it to be unresponsive and immediately began CPR, working on the patient until the Orlando Fire Department Engine Five arrived, and began advanced life support measures. After the shock was provided by the crews, the patient regained a good pulse and blood pressure. It is the opinion of the paramedics on the scene that the actions of Officer Mills directly contributed to the successful outcome for this patient. His performance of CPR gave the patient his best chance of survival, providing a viable patient for the medical crews." And we'd like to, I'd like to have Lieutenant Mark Klein come up. He's the officer from Engine Five. He came in on his off day today, because he really felt it was important that we know how serious this care that was provided before they arrived, like I was telling you all this morning, how serious and different it made. It is extremely coincidental. The plaque reads, "The Orlando Fire Department proudly recognizes Orlando Police Officer Jonathan Mills for your actions on February 3rd, 2013, providing CPR in saving the life of an Orlando citizen. Your actions exemplify the character of an Orlando police officer." Mayor Buddy Dyer, Fire Chief John Miller. Congratulations.
Okay, I'm going to move into the mayor's update, and earlier this month, last week, we, two weeks ago, we lost a valuable employee, Kevin Tyeski, who most of you knew. He passed away unexpectedly and tragically. And while I know many of us are feeling the deep personal loss of Kevin, as a person and a coworker, his untimely passing is also an incredible professional loss for our organization, the entire city. I would say Kevin was one of those really irreplaceable people. We will move on, but he was with the city for 18 years. He rose from Chief Planner to Deputy Director of Economic Development. I know that he was Brooks' right hand, right arm. He will certainly be missed, his history or his knowledge of so many things, his guidance of the Baldwin Park development, and I could go on and on. So let's honor Kevin by pausing for a moment of silence. Thank you, and I know that you'll keep his family and friends in your thoughts and prayers. And the city has set up a Kevin Tyeski City Planning Scholarship Funds for students that are pursuing a degree in city planning, and there is information on the city's economic development website on how you can contribute and participate if you would so desire. Okay, on a happier note, I would like to wish Orlando Police Chief Paul Rooney a happiest 49th birthday. He is claiming it is 49, and I... Okay, we sang to him at senior staff, but there's far more people.
It's Atlanta's birthday, too?
Is it Atlanta's birthday, too?
Yesterday.
Yesterday, okay, we'll do a double here. You guys ready? Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Chief and Clerk. Happy birthday to you. Okay, is that enough singing, Chief? All right. I had an opportunity to attend the 2013 Mayor's Black History Month luncheon today, hosted by the Orlando United Negro College Fund, which enables almost 60,000 students to attend college each year. Commissioner Linham joined me there, and Orlando Police Department Deputy Chief Charles Robinson, a graduate of Bethune-Cookman University and a member of the local advisory board, was awarded the inaugural Legacy Award for his work in our community. Congratulations, Chief Robinson. There he is, way in the back, smiling.
Is it your birthday you don't know?
No, is it seriously? Well, when we said chief, that included you too, Chief. Okay, the State of the City address is this coming Wednesday, February 27th, at 10:30, back in council chambers. Last year, we took it on the road out to the Medical City, but we are back in city council chambers. If you can't attend, we will stream the address live at cityoforlando.net. Also, the city will host the Seventh Annual Blues Barque on March the 9th, from 4:00 to 10:00, in front of the Orange County Courthouse. The event is free and features live music on two stages, including the headlining act, Robert Randolph and the Family Band, and we will have some great mouth-watering barbecue on hand as well. Okay, with all the green in the audience, do you guys envision a greener Orlando? As part of our Greenworks... As part of our Greenworks Orlando initiative, the city is introducing an ideas competition titled Envision 2040. Envision 2040 promotes an effort to visualize what Orlando, the most sustainable city in the southeast, will look like in 2040 with drawings and renderings and pictures. So for more information, go to GreenWorks. Okay, just have a mayor's update that's almost as long as Commissioner Engle's update. It's gonna be... So a couple of items of note from the agenda. On the agenda are minutes from the MPB meeting in January regarding changes to the city's landscape code that includes the city allowing vegetable gardens, annual vegetable gardens in the front yards of homes. I understand that and can visualize that there are many people here today in support of gardening, and I want to recognize you and commend you for advocating a more sustainable community. It is our goal to have Orlando the most sustainable community in the southeast United States. And we are working with a lot of people and want to be also one of the most environmentally conscious cities. I want to let you know that the city has explored the recommendations that were, that came out of that MPB meeting. It's had several meetings with stakeholders in the gardening community, including Mr. Helveston, to consider the original proposed conditions regarding a 25% maximum and four feet height maximum recommendations. Staff is currently working on further revisions to the proposed changes to the ordinance. And once staff has completed the revised recommendations, they will come to city council as an ordinance, and we will have a public hearing. There'll be a first and second reading. So if you would like to comment on the issue today, I know that some, a couple folks at least have turned in cards, and you'll get that opportunity at general appearance later on today. Two last things. This past year, we've seen 24 cases in central Florida relating to human trafficking. And I know this has been one of Commissioner Ortiz's big concerns. One of them recently involved the rescue of a 14-year-old girl who had been abducted and was being forced into prostitution. On the agenda today is an application for a $500,000 federal grant to further tackle that issue. And if awarded, that grant would help create a human trafficking task force and funding to support dedicated human trafficking investigators and intelligence analysts. The last item I want to mention, there are two items related to the purchase of property in Paramore. As you know, commissioners, revitalization of downtown, and especially Paramore has been all of our priorities, and certainly Commissioner Lyman's in Paramore. And we have an opportunity to make a very strategic purchase, a purchase that had been highlighted eight years ago. How long has it been since we did the Paramore Task Force?
One before...
Seven or eight years ago, that had targeted this piece of property. And anecdotally, I was with Commissioner Lyman at the, yeah, the Capital One game, and encountered the people that owned that property. And we had been after them for years about selling it, and the time was right, so we were able to make the strategic purchase. With that, we will move into the consent agenda. The consent agenda is a number of items acted upon through a single vote of council. We give each of the commissioners an opportunity to comment on the consent agenda, as well as update you on items of importance in their district. And we rotate the order in which we go, and today, going first, leading off, Commissioner Tony Ortiz.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, let me thank you for supporting the application for that grant for human trafficking. I think that's a very important step in our, in our history here in Orlando. We need to continue creating awareness of this tragic incidence that is going on in our communities. And I also want to echo your words and want to take the opportunity to express my sympathy and deepest condolences to the family, who was more than an employee, who was an icon here at City Hall and a good friend. Also, this expression of condolences and sympathy goes to the coworkers on economic development and in the city as a whole. There's a quote that I use from an English author, Albert Pine, that I use it often, and it really applies to Mr. Kevin Tyaski. It says, "What we do for ourselves die with us. What we do for others and the world is and will remain immortal." And that's the case with him. What he did, he didn't do it for himself, he did it for everybody else. And he was ever so quiet, and with just looking at you and smiling, he could just tell you a whole gamut of thanks. And he was such a great person. So let's keep him in our prayers and in our minds, and his family, too. Also, I'd like to congratulate District 2 Resident and Block Captain of the Year, Mr. Roger Selch, from Dorishurst East Neighborhood. Roger is a very proactive guy in our, in our community, a great friend, too, who enjoys serving his community as a block captain of the City Neighborhood Watch Program. So congratulations to him. He has come up, he has been a leader for many years of the Neighborhood Watch Program. He's a coordinator, but he also has been an exemplar to other communities in how he provides and disseminates information to the community and keeps that community together. I also like to congratulate Mrs. Diana Bolivar, who was recently sworn in as the new president of the Hispanic Chamber of Commerce of Metro Orlando. My best wishes to her. And once again, it's that time of the year to all our constituents, we are doing taxes, well, not us, but the IRS is doing taxes for our constituents at the Angledwood Community Center, two days a week, on Thursday from 6:00 to 9:00, and on Sundays from 1:00 to 5:00 PM. Those services are provided by IRS-certified community volunteers. So, hey, can't go wrong with that, because they did it themselves, right? So make sure that if you have personal taxes, these are not corporate taxes, personal taxes, you can come and visit us at the Angledwood Community Center. And that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner, we'll move to District 3. Commissioner Stewart.
Thank you, Mayor. And all of us would express our sympathies to Kevin and his family. Kevin was one of those few guys that, you're exactly right, not only is he gonna be missed personally, but had a wonderful professional relationship and did nothing but work on making our city better. And I appreciate your comments and the work that he's done. And I'll tell you, I appreciate our staff stepping up to making sure that we're continuing his legacy, both in terms of the work we've done and the hard work that they've continued to do. So thank you, and same to you, Brooke. Couple things I wanted to share with you briefly. The Manella Museum Gala was this past weekend. I had an opportunity to honor Mayor Linda Hood and Mayor Linda Chapin on the work that they have done in terms of the Manella and their vision and accomplishing that task. I'm thrilled to be there, along with the mayor, to get a chance to renew old acquaintances and see some real activity going on. Reminds me that if you hadn't had a chance to be over, look over at the latest exhibit on African-American art, please get a chance to go over there. I will tell you that I was told and told somebody the other day, I'm not into the painting and that kind of stuff. I really like photography, but I will tell you that the photography is exquisite in terms of the emotion and the process that they use. And so it's been wonderful to be over there and be part of that. Congratulations go to the Edgewater High School Girls Basketball Team for winning the 6A state championship for the second year in a row, and to Dr. Phillips for doing the same, winning 8A for the second year in a row. So thrilled about having these championships stay in Orlando, and I appreciate that, and appreciate the work that they've done. Central Florida Fair kicks off this weekend, starts on Thursday evening, all run through March 10th. So we're looking forward to a great fair, have some new leadership over there. And I think I just lost it, but I will go loudly. One, two, three, I keep going, all right. There's some many new additions, and one of the things we're bringing back is bringing back concerts that you can get with, and with the regular price of admission. So go to centralfloridafair.com and get a chance to look at that. On March 9th, Keep Orlando Beautiful and Ivanhoe Village are working together on another Refresh Orlando project, thanks to support of volunteers and the color wheel paint. We're repainting the Dr. Phillips Performing Arts Building on North Orange Avenue with volunteers on Saturday, March 9th, from 9:00 to 12:00. If you want to volunteer, please contact cityoforlando.net/kob for Keep Orlando Beautiful. On March, Sunday, March 10th, the College Park Neighborhood Association will be hosting their annual Sunday in the Park. Starts at noon at Dartmouth and goes until 5:00 o'clock. And if we are lucky, we'll get one year without rain. We've had two years in a row with a little bit of rain. So please, we're looking forward to seeing this. Family event, and of course, it's free to everybody who's there. And then on March 16th and 17th, Lew Gardens Annual Plant Sale's coming up, and admission is free for those two days, and it's a great place to get a chance to see the garden and to purchase a lot of great plants. So you guys get over there. Let me share one brief paragraph about a friend of mine. Last year, I lost a dear friend in the community, and the community lost an advocate, champion, and an inspiration for the fight against breast cancer. Ellen Stevenson inspired others to raise more than $200,000 to fund research, and she advocated for laws to protect patients and pay for mammograms. She's a graduate of Winter Park High School. Ellen loved our community and was an integral part of the Baldwin Park Relay for Life and many other philanthropic endeavors around town. This year, her friends have organized the Second Annual Ellen's Walk with the Angels. It'll take place at 1:00 PM on Saturday, March 23rd, at Lake Eola. If you'd like to come join me, I'd love to have you come out and join us in memory and honor of Ellen. But you can go to angelswalk.org and get some information there. On the agenda today, let me just cover a couple of things. We're accepting the report from this morning. Chief, you did a great job. Thank you for your work. And I had a chance at the end of break to read all 500 pages. I was really impressed with the work that you did. No, I didn't get a chance to read it all, but I did get a chance to look through it, and I appreciate your work and the work of OFD. It's important for our community. And I appreciate the partnership between you and all of public safety. So thank you very much for all you do. I-11, we will be approving the Rosemont Country, Rosemont Community Center parking lot expansion. We've been working on that for a while. Thank you to Deborah and to Linda for the work y'all have done. Thank you very much. That has become a real icon in that area over there, and we appreciate that. Having some additional parking is gonna be really important to that community over there and allow us to use that building a little bit more often. And then we talked about, the mayor talked about C-1 and the MPB. I want to say a special thanks to Jason Burton and John Ippe for their leadership and for their willingness to spend time with the community. I appreciate that a great deal, and appreciate those who have taken time to share their opinion with us. I think that we'll, we've got a good compromise working forward, and I think that's gonna be good for the city and good for the citizens as well. And that's all. Oh, and last one thing. Chief Miller, thank you for the recognition of Officer Mills, and thank you, Chief Rooney, for that. We have a lot of great staff in the city of Orlando, and we probably, in a sense, don't recognize them enough, but it's a good chance to say thank you to people who just do their job and do it well and do it professionally, and people don't hear about that often enough. So thank you very much for doing that, Miller, not to me. That's it, Mayor.
Thank you. Commissioner, we'll move to District 4. Commissioner Sheen.
Thank you, Mayor. And I'd like to add to what happened with Kevin and the terrible loss of him, and it was a very touching service. And you know what? I mean, what a good man he was, and what a wonderful service. And Pat and his sons are so, should be so proud of the job that they did, and it was just a very, very touching tribute to Kevin, and Godspeed, my friend. Dennis Jenkins was my District 4 Block Captain of the Year. He does a great job over in Lake Como. We celebrate him. And on the agenda today, want to welcome on Item A2, Orrin Henry, our new Director of Housing. On Item B7, red light cameras, we're gonna extend that contract. I find it very distressing, though, that the legislature keeps trying to abolish this program when it's been proven to save lives, it's reduced intersection crashes, I think, 30 or 40 percent. It's just absolutely ridiculous that the Florida Legislature keeps trying to abolish this good system. And, you know, hopefully, we can keep this going. You don't have to keep going back and fighting it over and over and over again. It's just absolutely absurd. The bill was actually named after a man who lost his life at a red light crash, and he left a young family. So I just don't understand why the legislature just doesn't seem to get it, but this is something that we should continue to fight for, because it saves lives. On Item C1, on the MPB minutes about the vegetable gardens, as the person who did the urban chicken ordinance, which I expected... Well, it's a pilot program, not an ordinance yet. Hopefully, we can get there. I don't understand why we can get chickens done, but we can still do veggies, but hopefully, we can do the right thing here. And... But I see Richard Powell's in the audience. He actually worked with me on the Festival Park Community Garden, and a lot of you have worked with me in the community gardens, and I think they're wonderful things. And I'm working on my fifth one in District 4. And I think we do need to look at things like sunlight. I've worked on these, so we need to look at things like sunlight, flexibility, making sure that the gardens are placed in an appropriate spot. And definitely, we need to make sure that the appropriate things are done so that we don't have, you know, runoff going into the storm system, things like that, and abide by the proper setbacks. But, you know, I've seen how much community gardening has actually transformed wherever we've put them. And the great thing is you've got young people gardening next to the older folks, and the older folks are teaching younger people how to can vegetables, and it's just such a wonderful, wonderful thing. And I support this 100%, and really hoping to come forward with an ordinance that supports gardening throughout the city, because I know what a wonderful thing it is. And I'm not used to getting applauded for it at the city council meeting, so thank you for that. And we'll work with you. I mean, I know sometimes people think, you know, you know, sometimes we get complaints, we gotta work with both sides, but, you know, we'll get this, we'll get this to a place where it needs to be. And peep, cheap, and bleep salute you, community chicken people, too, so, good thing. And on the last item on the agenda today, Mayor, on Item F1, Heart-to-Heart Women's Shelter, I want to thank the Housing Department for adding the fire sprinklers that were so necessary to get that shelter open for needy women in District 4. And that's all I had, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Sheen, we'll move to District 5. Commissioner Lyman.
Thank you, Mayor. And just a few announcements before I get into the agenda. And, you know, this month has been Black History Month, but with me, every day is Black History. But this, we've had a great month, and so many activities here at City Hall and across the city and across the entire region. And I want to applaud our city staff and those in the community. With sponsored events, I know one of the events I'd hoped to help with regarding photography and the arts for February, we had to move it to March. So from March 4th through March 10th, we will have a gallery in the rotunda of David Johnson's Photography. So if you guys can get by and see that photography from all across America, it is a wonderful, it will be a wonderful exhibition. But there's so many events that it really is kind of hard to try to enumerate. But on Friday, BBIF was at the Art Museum, where they recognized over 187,000 African-American and other small businesses. But of that 187,000, about 25 were there being recognized as pioneers and trailblazers. So I want to applaud the BBIF. And of course, Mayor's already talked about Blues BQ. That is one good place to go to have some great barbecue and a good cold beer. So please join me. The other, on Saturday, there was a great neighborhood, Mayor's Neighborhood, what do you call that, Mayor? You've already announced it. Association, we do it every year.
The Summit.
The Summit, yes. And District 5 had to...
Thank you, Mayor, and just a few announcements before I get into the agenda, and, you know, this month has been Black History Month, but with me, every day is Black History. But this, we've had a great month and so many activities here at City Hall and across the city and across the entire region, and I want to applaud our city staff and those in the community. With sponsored events, I know one of the events I'd hoped to help with regarding photography and the arts for February, we had to move it to March. So from March 4th through March 10th, we will have a gallery in the rotunda of David Johnson's photography. So if you guys can get by and see that photography from all across America, it is a wonderful, it will be a wonderful exhibition. But there's so many events that it really is kind of hard to try to enumerate. But on Friday, BBIF was at the Art Museum, where they recognized over 187,000 African-American and other small businesses, but of that 187,000, about 25 were there being recognized as pioneers and trailblazers. So I want to applaud the BBIF, and of course, Mayor's already talked about Bluesby Q. That is one good place to go to have some great barbecue and a good cold beer, so please join me. The other, on Saturday, there was a great neighborhood, Mayor's Neighborhood, what do you call that, Mayor? You've already announced it, Association, but we do it every year.
The Summit.
The Summit, yes. And District 5 had two winners, the only two, but we had lots of nominees, and I just want to applaud Fannie Williams, who works hard, and worked us all hard this past year. I think the two chiefs I mentioned before, she had them bringing food out of her kitchen to a picnic, and Gennaro had to join them. Ms. Williams does not play when it comes to achieving her goals, and Froni Jones was proud as a peacock, and I'm so proud of her for the work she does with Onyx Mayor. And Henrietta Tice was recommended because she was one of the most stable volunteers in District 5, or in Orlando. She does it every day, all the time. But Mrs. Williams came in like a hurricane this past year and just took the leadership and did a great job, so I do want to congratulate them and the others who were recommended as nominees. So I think now I will go to the agenda. Like I said, there's so many events, I just can't name them all, but I'd like to start with agenda. On agenda item A4, we have the opportunity now for a disparity study. I know Byron has been working on this for years. We've been talking about it, and I'm just really happy to see us, because these things are very expensive and they're very intense, that you have to literally go in partnership with other agencies to make it work. So we're on our way, and I want to congratulate Byron and his staff. On agenda item B6, I plan to tell Kevin those I will look toward the MWBE results. This was the third ranking team, and you had to keep going down, 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 and they didn't have an MWBE, but you said you gave them five to 10 days, I guess, to get up and ready for it, so I'd like to know the results of that. And of course, Mayor Dyer's already mentioned the acquisition of those parcels. I think it was very strategic, and if anybody knows Lori Botts, working and negotiating with that young lady is not easy. She runs a hard bargain, so if we've got this, whatever price she has set, she negotiated as best she could, and she's an expert at this, so I trust her wisdom as she moves through the process, and I want to express my appreciation too, because in the, you'll see later as we move towards some of the things we need to do in Paramore. I heard Commissioner, Ian's mentioned D1 regarding the tennis pro form. Our new, our tennis center has a new format, and that means any tennis pro who wants to come will pay their fees and bring their clients and do what they have to do. It is a great format for us. We still don't have the tennis pro shop up and running with a person in charge of that, but we've hired a great manager, and I'm really, really excited about it. The one thing we've got to watch here in Orlando, there was a young kid by the name of Stephen Watson. He's going to be the next Venus and Serena. I'm just telling you, he is so good. But the boy version, yeah. You cannot mistake him for anything but, you know, young, he is absolutely adorable, and there, we're going to the open one day, if I live long enough, to see him play. Out of the tennis center, he worked with me on the tennis, um, what did I have over there? This is in November, we had a tennis tournament, and he beat everything over there. I mean, he just knocked them out. So congratulations, Stephen Watson. He's raising money right now to go to some of the, some of the tournaments where he can really showcase in the junior part of tennis. So look for Stephen Watson, homeschool, et cetera. On F3, I think it is, on F3, I want to say real special things to our Public Works people. We're getting ready to do some unusual things out in Lake Lawn. We've seldom talk about this because it's not real sexy like tennis, but I think when you get your streets resurfaced, and I think one of the TV personalities said, "Well, if you're going to travel, why don't you get the potholes fixed in your district?" But my position is I don't use pothole money, but here's an opportunity for Public Works to resurface the roads, to get more fire hydrants off Mercy Drive in the Lake Lawn area, the water lines clean, and through housing, we are about to go into District 5 for the second time to get the weatherization program going, where you can get up to $45,000 in weatherizing your houses for new roofs and windows and whatever else that they would need out there. So I need you to look for our meeting at the Northwest Community Center, coming up very, very, very quickly, so that we can take advantage of these opportunities to improve the quality of life for some of these households and these homes. Now, next to my last agenda item, that's I-1. I mentioned it very briefly during Agenda. I will vote no on agenda item I-1. This particular firm has a 3.2% minority and woman-owned business participation because there are no goals or requirements, but the same company in District 5, operating in District 5 too, comes back later, I mean, before now, working on the South Street alignment and did quite well. Well, because he was expected to do well, but when you're expected to do the right thing, you ought to do it all the time, and just because out of over $5 million contract, you get 3.2% MWBE participation or DBE, there's something wrong with that picture to me. And I'd like for all of us start looking at these companies that come here with every cock and bull story about not hiring people in our communities, in our districts. Thank you. That's it. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner. And we'll move to District 6. Commissioner Rings.
Thank you, Mayor, and I'd like to say congratulations to Marie Triscari and the International Drive Chamber of Commerce for all of the work that they've done over the past 25 years. Marie has been there since the beginning, and she's been in the leadership role since the beginning, doing a great job. Also, the I-Drive Chamber has its I-Drive Tourism Academy that starts every October, so I would encourage those of you who would like to go and see some of the behind-the-scenes at SeaWorld, Disney, Universal, to take this opportunity and attend that particular academy. And then I'd also like to say to Pablo and Alejandro, I don't know if you're members of the I-Drive Area Chamber of Commerce, but now is the time to join. All right. I'd also like to, to report that on this past Thursday and Friday, I attended Noble, which is the National Organization of Black Law Enforcement Executives, their 2013 William R. Bracy winner CEO symposium, and their theme was "What Happens When the Power Goes Out Post Hurricane Sandy?", and this was held in Baltimore, Maryland. This was a great event. We had Congressman Elijah E. Cummins, the Maryland's 7th District, to come and give us opening remarks. We also had Roberta L. Hilton, Senior Law Enforcement Advisor to the Federal Emergency Management Agency FEMA, who was on hand, as well as FEMA's Director, William Craig Fugate, and William Fugate is actually out of Florida, and he is the administrator for FEMA, and he was the guest luncheon speaker. They brought nothing but great support to the conference, great information concerning how FEMA was involved in helping the residents of New York, New Jersey, Connecticut, and some of the other surrounding areas during the time of Hurricane Sandy. And this was a great conference. Noble also had a workshop entitled Noble Act Against AIDS Leadership Initiative, and this was a town hall meeting that was very well attended, too. The sheriff of Monmouth County, New Jersey, where the hurricane really hit the hardest, Sean Golden, he has a brother that's the head football coach of the Miami Hurricanes here in Florida, in Miami, and so he talks constantly of being in the Miami and Fort Lauderdale and also in the Orlando area, so we had some great relations there that were established, and so we looked for even greater things, especially from FEMA. I was able to bring back many of the materials and pass along to Manny Soto, our Director of Emergency Management here in the city, and hopefully Manny and I can get together because I want him to help me establish many of the CERT training for some of our homeowners' associations and our churches so that we can strengthen within District 6, because we never know when it happens, and we talked today about CPR, and those would be some other things to bring into the community to help people be trained in how to take care of one another. And then also, on that Saturday, I attended the Mayor's Summit, and that was a great event. It's always huge, and the people stay. From morning to afternoon, they stay, and that's, that's a good sign that you have a great program going on there. And yes, Commissioner Linum and her team, and she's right about Ms. Fannie, because she certainly worked very hard for their community and building a good, strong community. Also, in celebration of Black History Month, I hosted my second annual Walk for Peace and Job Fair event that was held Saturday. We started our walk around about 10:30 or something like that, and we went into Hankins Park. We walked for about a mile from the frontline outreach to Dr. I. Sylvester Hankins Park there at Lake Park and Columbia Street. We had a series of prayers that were given by some of the local pastors who had addressed the public, and that's Pastor Bishop Tony Reed, Truth by Fire Ministries, Pastor Terrence Gray from St. Mark AME Church, and Pastor Deborah Reed, the wife of Bishop Reed, Truth by Fire Ministries, and Pastor David Jones Jr., Friendship Missionary Baptist Church. And the pastors prayed for economics, prosperity, community, the nation, homes, our family, on the jobs, schools, justice, protection from crime, and also pray for our government, jobs, pray for the churches, and pray for our children. And so we had a wonderful time. Many of the participants for the job fair was there before we got there with the march, which was a great thing because many of the vendors that were there, they were impressed by the number of people that came and were seeking jobs, and we did make a difference in the lives of other people, and of course, they were coming towards the last minute, but that's okay because we had many vendors to kind of stay around and work with them. And some of the vendors I'd like to thank is Destin for Destiny, Assurance Wireless, Orlando Police Department Recruiting, thank you so very much, and Orlando Fire Department Recruiting, thank you, Workforce Central Florida, Global One Network, GLE Scrap Metal, and AT&amp;T, thank you so much for all of your help, and they really made a difference. As a matter of fact, the people from AT&amp;T said, "Commissioner, thank you for doing this." Said, "You inspired me to even do more and to reach out more in the community to help those that are in need." And then I'd also like to thank Mike Pavelko, he's the site manager at Hankins Park, Marlon Poty, the manager at Smith Center, Larry Williams, the director of Simeon Development Center for Men, and Officer Tia Pruitt, and Officer Kevin Williams, and AIDS Cynthia Wilson and Jackie Cockham. So thank you all very much for a very successful event, and thank the community for coming out, and we did feed the people as well, so that was a good thing, and we're looking for more businesses. We're going to do job fairs again, and this time it will be inside at the Smith Center, and that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner, and we'll move to District 1. Commissioner Ray.
Thank you, Mayor. Given the size of the agenda and the fact that we have a lot of neighbors that want to speak to us, I think I'll yield my time. I will say one thing, all events that happen in District 1, we track on our website, on the City of Orlando website, events past, future, and next week, we'll have a series of three community meetings. I thought after eight months on the job, it was time for me to check in with my neighbors and make sure I'm doing a good job, so with that, I will, I will yield my time.
Okay, and Commissioner Linum, we got the changes to B3.
Yes, sir.
In before the meeting, right?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve?
Move it through.
Motion by Commissioner Linum, second by Commissioner Sheehan. All in favor of the motion indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Let's, without objection, recess the City Council Meeting. We will convene the CRA meeting. Thomas, what do we have today?
Thank you, Mayor, and good afternoon to you and members of the council. I think item number one is accepting minute, meeting minutes of the CRA Advisory Board.
Okay, is there a motion to accept the meeting minutes for November 14th?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Sheehan, second by Commissioner Linum. Discussion, all in favor of the motion indicate so by saying aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Number two, Thomas.
Thank you. Number two is the Central Florida Urban League Funding Agreement. This funding agreement provides $12,500 for fiscal year 2012, 2013 to the Central Florida Urban League to operate programs consistent with certain redevelopment plan objectives and provides performance benchmarks which must be achieved. The CRA Advisory Board recommended approval at its January 23rd meeting, and staff is hereby recommending or requesting approval of the Central Florida Urban League Funding Agreement and authorize expenditures from the downtown Orlando Community Redevelopment Area Trust Fund of up to $12,500 for such projects, subject to review and approval by the City Attorney's Office and authorize execution of the agreement by the Chairman and the Executive Director.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Stewart, second by Commissioner Sheehan. Discussion, hearing done, all in favor of the motion indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Number three, or number three, Thomas.
All right. Item number three is the CRA Policy and Procedure Amendment, Section 1240.1. You'll recall that in November of 2012, the city adopted revised, revised Chapter 7 to the city code pertaining to procurement of goods and services. This, these proposed changes to the CRA policy and procedure in 1240.1 include changes to the policy made necessary by those revisions adopted by the city to Chapter 7. The CRA Advisory Board again recommended approval in its January 23rd meeting, and staff is hereby requesting approval of Section 1240.1 of the CRA policy and procedures.
Move it through. Second.
Motion by Commissioner Linum, second by Commissioner Sheehan. Discussion, hearing done, all in favor of the motion indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Any further business come forth, CRA, Thomas?
There's none. Thank you.
Then we are adjourned, and we will reconvene the City Council Meeting. That brings us to new business hearings, and you'll recall that, yes, about nine, 10 months ago, we authorized a purchase option agreement and feasibility study with SED Development for the majority of the block that is north of the Amway Center, and we accepted out about three and a third acres because the OPD headquarters was sitting on that three and a third acres, and at that time, we didn't have much of a plan on what we would do to build a new police headquarters and make that property available. You'll recall a couple of council meetings ago, we had a workshop where we talked about the potential for a new police headquarters building on OBT that would allow for the redevelopment of the entire block, and the redevelopment builds on our efforts to transform downtown Orlando and to provide entertainment and social options for a broad demographic across our community. So over the last year, staff has been working closely with the sports and entertainment development being proposed by the Magic, and as these discussions went on, we began to envision the redevelopment of the entire block, so today, we'll be holding a public hearing regarding the proposed feasibility study and purchase option agreement between the city and SED for the remainder of the block, approximately 3.3 acres where the Orlando Police Headquarters is currently located. Notice of the hearing appeared in the Orlando Sentinel. On February the 16th, 2013, if after the option period, the city proposes to sell the property to SED, then the sales contract would come back to council for a separate charter hearing, and these, the timeframes for the two options are not running concurrently. The Magic will bring back the first develop, or first feasibility study, probably sometime in the next couple of meetings, and then the second one will extend a little bit longer than that. At this time, I will open it to anyone from the public that would wish to speak. Are you Catherine Hedinger?
No, my name is Tracy Anderson White.
Okay, Tracy, what you'll need to do, Tracy, is, I'm going to let you appear, but you'll need to turn in an appearance request card.
There were no appearance forms outside. I'd be happy to fill one out.
Okay, well, how about bring the mic down to where we can hear you, and state your name and address.
My name is Tracy Anderson White. I live at 20 I live at 2801 Lake Sunset Drive, over in the Lula Terrace subdivision. My concern is about the eyesore that sits in our neighborhood. It's there at the corner of Orange Center Boulevard as well as Tampa Avenue. It was once called the Village. The apartments across from it, Lakeview Terrace and Bunch Manor, and also Orange Manor, are also in ruin. Now, this is important to me, because when I was a small child, my parents built a house on Lake Sunset. And this is affecting my property value. But more important, the people who live in that particular housing development are not being seen after. They have fallen down staircases, the ceilings are falling in, they have mildew infestation and roaches that is unbelievable. I hope, I don't know if you know it, but mildew infestation causes asthma, respiratory problems, memory loss, and headaches. It reminds me of a situation just after the Civil War, when black people were given their rights. The Thirteenth Amendment gave us our freedom, but there was a loophole in it. And part of it reads, "Neither slavery nor involuntary servitude, except for punishment of a crime, where a party shall be duly convicted, shall exist within the U.S." Now, what this did was it provided an opportunity for African Americans to be arrested for misdemeanors that they turned into felonies. Now, once that happened, it became a very horrible situation. Similar to those particular Americans, we are the same way. With the condition of those apartments, it's also affecting the homeowners. Our property values are weaning.
We, Ms., we had a fairly extensive discussion on this very subject at the last council meeting, and detailed exactly how we're handling this, what the rules and property rights of the owner, the bankruptcy, the bankruptcy that's involved in this. So, you can know that our code enforcement, our OPD, our public works are all very aware, well aware of this, and we are doing everything we can do to try to improve the conditions there. But it is a very difficult legal position for the city. Now, the hearing that we're on actually does not in any way relate to that subject matter. So, if you would like to come back at general appearance, which will be in probably about 20 minutes, you will hear the rest of your comments, okay?
I'll be certainly happy to come back in about 20 minutes. Do I need to find the paper or just come back to the...
Please, you can just come right over here and do that.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. I do have somebody that wanted to speak on this particular issue, Catherine Hettinger.
I have a mic, so...
Ed, do you have a hand mic back there?
I think if you start meetings at 11 o'clock, you'll get more evil-bodied people that will show up.
Check one, two?
I think so.
Check one, two?
Yeah, that's working. Okay. If you'll state your name and your residence address.
Can you hear me at all?
I don't think that is working.
Is it working? It's filling up the floor.
We don't have the technical ability to provide you with a hand mic, so your choice is...
This is kind of, okay, this is fine. Okay, this is fine. I'll see if I can use it. This is short, so hopefully I'll stand this one. Okay. So, I'm going to kind of preach to y'all, just like I've seen done here before, often to the people in the audience, actually. I thought it was terrible this one day. So, I'm going to talk, first of all, to the gals out there. Psychologists wrote a book that says we are, every one of us will cheat a little. I want to clue you in. Those who were raised one or has a nephew, you have seen the glint. American culture tries to say males are not emotional, but we know they are. A seven-year-old gets this glint in his eye, watch out. So, you think you are seeing one thing, so you think you are seeing one thing about you. I'm telling you to get clued in. The boys are adult enough to know that they have to get their hands dirty, because we don't live in Fantasyland. The difference is that they will do the wink and the half-smile when it is way over the top. I watch you earnestly plod on. You think it is just a small, real-world thing. They know they are telling a whopper. You tell yourself it isn't much. Why does it matter? If you hung out in college with the sorority, then you wouldn't have been around boys when there are more transparents, so you wouldn't get to be savvy enough. If you entertain many women around you, I suggest you study up and quit. The county commission is just blocks away, and you would do well to see the atmosphere and play there tomorrow. Show up. For whom the bell tolls, it tolls for thee. The boys know the mistake Commissioner Fernandez made. She looked around and grabs cash like she thinks others are doing. She had to have been a babe in the woods. Newsflash, if you take the cash, then always getting, get something on the person handing you the cash. The good old boys with Jacob Stewart will pull Mayor Frederick and pay off the white boys when they leave office à la Bottom Park. So, heed this warning. Start pulling everything you can think of from the consent agenda. Do your jobs twice as good as white men. You have to. From what I saw, Commissioner Thompson is flirting with jail time. Obvious to everyone but you gals, all you see turns off power on three-month-old babies when the humidity is 100% and the temperature is 95 degrees. Other utilities won't do that. Yet this mayor allowed millionaire divorce, a generous charitable deal. The Magic doesn't pay its own light AC bill. This in front of us now. So, now I'm talking about this matter. This is another wonderful charitable handout that looks at beat-up shacks and fails to value property that has turned commercial to commercial values. Now, they have to knock down our police headquarters. The cell price doesn't even cover the bill for the knockdown. Some say megalomania is at work here. Don't be fooled by a belief that this city attorney will somehow do a memorandum of remit which is not a giveaway. The 15 million I mentioned before had an MOU which just handed it to Bank of America. This is a blown-up arena. No further city commissioner input or city worker checks and balances. Once sweetened up with junk bonds from the police and fire and city employee pensions, funds, the new junk bond ripoff will begin profiting Bank of America even more. Office space, the buildings around us are half-empty. This is not even a municipal use for municipal bonds. Blow up some asbestos while kids are going to church. Hand out more monents to the rich pyramid scheme king. Hey, why not? I am sorry to remind you, you are selling us down the river, the voters. The majority of voters are women, and we will not stand for this. Once the Sentinel quits pur dogging the county commission, they will do something astounding. Google the way that I did. Any questions?
No, I don't think so. Thank you. Okay. Any further, any other cards, Madam Clerk, for this subject matter?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Is there, Commissioner Linum?
Yes. Is there a price somewhere? I didn't see one. Maybe I missed it in the agenda?
A what?
Was there a cost? I hadn't seen one.
No, the, it's fair market value determined when they come back, so there'll be a contract coming back.
Oh, okay. I thought so. Boy, we had this thing. But let me share a little light that I've learned through my time here. And this was in 2000. We had a downtown summit. And at the downtown summit, it was at some hotel, must have been, oh, boy, where were we? Maybe the Embassy Suite was there then. It was somewhere down here. And I, and we basically looked at downtown and Paramore. And you know, I'm very disappointed in some things we haven't been able to do for Paramore. And we had a line of them ready to go, just waiting to go, until the market fell out. And there was just nothing we could do. I mean, major projects that were going to come out of the ground, create more housing, more opportunities. And I have really, really been sick about that. But it was during that time, we also decided the police department needed to go somewhere else. And we started buying properties along Anderson Street and other places over to the south. I always tease that it's going to take a crane to get the police department out of that close to downtown. But we've always thought since that time that that property was just too valuable for us to not have a better and higher use. So, 13 years later, I'm having this discussion, but it was long before you were mayor, mayor. You were not here at the time we had this discussion. Because if it were up to me, I would have the Magic go west on Church Street. That's my favorite piece of property that I have set out. But everyone has always known that we really wanted to have something high-rise and big and beautiful along the core. And at that time, there was an architect, he just died last year, Alan, Alan, oh, gosh, I can't think of his name now. I thought the amount of money he said he would offer was significantly high. So, I'm looking for what the fair market value is. And I see Lori coming in, so I'm going to ask her what does she think it is later off the record, what she feels, what's the going rate for that property. But I just need the community to know that looking at that Orlando Police Department moving is old, old, old news, very, very old news, Council. It is not new. Thank you.
Well, we have learned, big things take a long time to get done.
Yes, we do.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve?
Move it through.
Motion by, let me just get this in front of us, so we can have a discussion. Motion by Commissioner Linum, second by Commissioner Sheehan. Now, discussion among commissioners. Commissioner Ortiz.
I just want to say something real quick. I am so glad you're moving, because I worked there for 14 years. And most people might not know this, but that building is, I want to say it like this, like it's sick, because somebody might, somebody might think that the government has been allowing police officers to be there for so long. But that building is old. Technology is old. Law enforcement we have in this day and age is technology-driven. We need a building that would be technology-driven, too. It's time for us to move, and this is going to be a win-win situation. You just need to know this. That's all I have to say, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner. Further discussion, hearing none, all in favor of the motion indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Hearings, number, let's see, we'll move down to the University of Central Florida Transportation Mitigation Development Agreement. This is the second of two public hearings required by statute regarding the city's notice of intent to consider the University of Central Florida Transportation Mitigation Development Agreement between Lake Nona, the city, and UCF. Notice of this hearing appeared in the Orlando Sentinel on February 14th, 2013. I will open this hearing to the public. Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak on this specific subject? All right. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion by Commissioner Gray, second by Commissioner Sheehan. Discussion among commissioners, hearing none, all in favor of the motion indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. All right. Madam Clerk, it's time for you. Let's move to hearings ordinances on second reading.
An ordinance of the city council of the City of Orlando, Florida annexing to the corporate limits of the City of Orlando, Florida certain real property generally located north of State Road 528, south of Lee Vista Boulevard, and west of Narcousie Road, and addressed as 7276 Narcousie Road comprised of .91 acres, more or less, amending the city's adopted growth management plan to designate the property as industrial in the city's official future land use map and designating the property as industrial commercial district with the aircraft noise overlay district on the city's official zoning maps, providing for severability, correction of scribblers errors, and an effective date.
Motion to adopt?
Second. Motion by Commissioner Gray, second by Commissioner Stewart. Is there anyone from the public that would like to testify on this matter? Discussion among commissioners, hearing none, all in favor of the motion indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Number two, Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the City of Orlando, Florida amending the growth management plan to amend the official future land use map by changing the future land use designation of certain property near the intersection of Narcousie Road and Dowden Road from airport support high intensity to airport support medium intensity. Changing the future land use designation of certain property near the intersection of Lee Vista Boulevard and State Road 417 from urban activity center to office medium intensity. Amending future land use subarea policy S 39.4 relating to land near the intersection of Lee Vista Boulevard and State Road 417. Amending future land use element policy 1.1.7 relating to the interpretation of future land use boundaries. Amending historic preservation element figure HP2 to reflect the landmarking of 500 South Orange Avenue, providing for severability and an effective date.
Hold on, before anybody makes a motion. As detailed in the agenda item summary for this matter, the future land use map amendment provided in Section One of the ordinance must be deferred, because the school board has not yet adopted a capacity enhancement agreement for the project, and they have to do that before we adopt the map amendment. The other sections of the ordinance are ready to go, so I would propose a motion to amend the ordinance to strike Section One from the ordinance and authorize the city attorney to return Section One to us in a separate ordinance for second reading and hearing after the school district adopts a school capacity agreement. So, is there a motion to amend the ordinance in that fashion?
Motion to amend.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Linum, second by Commissioner Stewart. All in favor of the motion to amend indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Sorry, your, I mean, Mayor.
Yep.
You need to have a date certain.
Okay. Then let's do it for the amend the motion to, friendly amendment, Commissioner Linum and Commissioner Stewart to March 25th. Is that...
Right. So that our present notice in public will suffice.
Okay. Then we will bring that back for second reading, assuming the school district has, in fact, acted at the March 25th city council meeting. But I understand that was the amendment, so all in favor of the amended, meant indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? So, the motion on the amendment carries. Now, I'll open the hearing to the public. Is there anyone that would like to testify on this matter? Then I will close the hearing. And now, I need a motion on the ordinance as amended.
Same.
Second. Motion by Commissioner, second by Commissioner Sheehan. All right. All in favor of the motion indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Let's go to ordinances, first reading, Madam Clerk, number one.
An ordinance of the City of Orlando, Florida relating to fees and taxes repealing Chapter 53 of the Code of the City of Orlando entitled interim proprietary and general services fee in its entirety. Amending Chapter 54A of the Code of the City of Orlando entitled municipal public service tax, renumbering Chapter 54A as Chapter 53. Amending such Chapter 53 to be consistent with the applicable Florida statutes. Making metered natural gas subject to the tax. Specifying the tax rate of four cents per gallon on the purchase of fuel oil. Replacing special fuels with alternative fuels and exempting alternative fuels from the tax. Exempting the purchase of natural, natural gas, manufactured gas, or fuel oil by a public or private utility either for resale or for use as a fuel in the generation of electricity from the tax. Requiring any purchaser who claims an exemption from the public service tax to certify to the seller that he or she qualifies for the exemption, providing for severability and an effective date.
Same.
Second. Motion by Commissioner Ing, second by Commissioner Ortiz. Is there anyone from the public that would testify on this matter? Do we have a card for that?
What was your name, ma'am?
Shuri.
Ms. Faircloth?
Yes.
Okay. We thought this was for a different hearing.
We thought this was for a different hearing.
It says you wanna speak on OUC installation of digital media, meters.
This is an indirect relationship.
Okay.
Speaking about now. My name is Sheree Faircloth. I reside in downtown Orlando at two zero zero nine Valencia Road. Um, it has come to my attention that OUC is now beginning to install digital meters, known as smart meters, on all homes that OUC services. Upon looking into this further, because I object to this, um, after speaking to OUC team members, service, customer service, uh, your public relations people at OUC, I find out that the digital meters can be associated with illnesses, okay? It seems that even though the digital meters are placed on the outside of the home because they are regulated by some radio wave frequencies, that they can cause illnesses. Now, the reason I brought this up, and the reason it concerns me, is because these meters have been installed across the country and other places. And there have been arrests, there have been utilities shutting people, uh, services off when they refuse to accept these meters. And because I have two medical conditions that might be adversely affected by the meters, I called OUC. And OUC did tell me that there were health-related issues to the smart digital meters, and that I could opt out of accepting a new meter on my home if I had a letter from a doctor stating that it could adversely affect my health. When the customer service rep at OUC did mention this, and I did not ask her to mention it, she on her own did bring it up, then I became very concerned. Because at this point, everything that I've heard and read about smart meter installation around the country has been just that, material that I've read. OUC confirms that this is the case, and that you can opt out of having a new digital meter on your home. But, and there's always but, but if I do opt out with a letter, which I have asked my doctor to provide that to OUC, then I will be charged a fee because I have chosen to opt out because of health reasons. But OUC does not yet know what that fee might be if I choose to opt out.
This Faircloth.
So, no, my concern is, I would like to know when OUC, because OUC is a city property, a city utility, it is not by the people and for the people. I am concerned about my opting out and being hit with whatever fee they may decide to charge me down the road. I was told that OUC would not begin to charge these fees until after full installation was completed throughout the service area, which could be quote-unquote, twenty fifteen. That I could opt out until twenty fifteen with no extra fee, because they don't know what it is. But at twenty fif, at the end of twenty fifteen, or whenever the installations are completed, then a fee would be established. Now, I don't understand how you can be changing meters out on people's homes. Most people don't even know this is happening, because there's been no open hearing other than an OUC hearing, which, uh, is on the website for OUC. I don't see how you can do this without having an established fee going in, so that people like myself who do opt out will know how much you're gonna stick me for, for continuing to have the old meter on my house. And most people in Orlando don't know this is going on. That was confirmed by another OUC employee that I have a meeting with tomorrow. So, yes, I have a concern, yes, this is a problem, it is not something that the city is aware of. Very few people know this is happening.
Okay, here's my suggestion to you.
Yes, sir.
The city owns the utility, but it is run by a board of directors, and they have a monthly meeting, and they allow, um, people to appear at the monthly meeting to address issues just like this. So the most appropriate place, I'm the only member of this board that actually sits on that board as well.
When is that meeting?
Uh, you know what, I can get that for you. It's on Wednesdays, it's the third Wednesday of the month, um, at one o'clock.
One o'clock? Okay, because.
But I will, I will get somebody to get you the information. Let's not rely on my memory of when the next meeting is.
No, sir, we're not doing that.
It's actually determined. And it should be on their webs, if you've been visiting their website, it should be on their website.
No, I don't live to go on the OUC website. That's why I never even knew that this was going on until I got my little connections newsletter. Now I know, now, you know, I'm making it as public as possible.
Okay, we appreciate that.
Well, there are issues around this. And I even called UPA, your third-party installer, United.
Well, I can assure you, there has been a lot of discussion at the OUC board meetings relating to this.
Sure. How many residents have actually attended those meetings?
I don't know.
Not many, because I.
But I can also show you that this is not the forum to address that issue.
Well, thank you for letting me address it. It was as close as I thought I was gonna get today on your agenda item, because it was indirectly related to natural gas.
Very indirectly.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, anybody else wanna talk on that one? Where are we?
Number two. Hearing starting's number two.
Let's see, I need a, okay. Did we get a motion in a second on this?
Yes.
Okay. Discussion among commissioners. Uh, hearing none, all in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Number three, Madam Clerk.
Mayor, I'm number two.
Sorry. We're on one side.
An ordinance of the City of Orlando, Florida amending the PD zoning ordinance of certain property generally located north and south of Lee Vista Boulevard, and east and west of the Central Florida Greenway, commonly known as the Beltway Commerce Center, comprised of five hundred and fourteen acres, more or less, providing conditions of the PD zoning district, providing for severability, and an effective date.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion by Commissioner Gray, second by Commissioner Sheehan. Is there anyone from the public that would testify on this matter? Discussion among commissioners, hearing none, all in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. All right, now, number three, Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Orlando, Florida rezoning certain land located generally at the southeast corner of the intersection of Municipal Drive and Vanguard Street, and comprised of about four point five-nine acres from the industrial park district to the planned development district on the city's official zoning maps, providing special land development regulations of the PD zoning district, providing for amendment of the city's official maps, severability, the correction of scrivener's errors, and an effective date.
Move to approve.
Second. Motion by Commissioner Ing, second by Commissioner Lyman. Is there anyone from the public that would like to testify on this matter? Discussion among commissioners, hearing none, all in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Number four, Madam Clerk.
An ordinance amending chapter forty-one, articles one through five of the code of the City of Orlando entitled false alarms by renumbering, reorganizing, and amending definitions in section forty-one point oh two. Amending sections forty-one point oh five through forty-one point one four and establishing registration and cancellation responsibilities for alarm owners, alarm installation companies, and monitoring companies, establishing fees, fines, and an appeal process. Remumbering section forty-one point oh six, providing for severability, correction of scrivener's errors, codification, and an effective date.
Same move.
Second. Motion by Commissioner Sheehan, second by Commissioner Ing. All right, Chief Metzger, Deputy Chief Metzger is here to give us a presentation on these proposed amendments which relate to chapter forty-one of the city code, and that is false intrusion alarms. Chief?
Thank you, Mayor. Good afternoon.
Chief, just before you go, the young lady who was up here before, the OUC meeting is, good thing we didn't rely on my memory, it's the second Tuesday of each month, so the next one is, uh, whatever the second Tuesday of March is, at two PM. Okay? You're up, chief.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. I'll keep my briefing, uh, brief, uh, because I wanna hear more about the home gardens, quite frankly. Uh, I would like to start by thanking Alarm Coordinator Audra Nordaby and Assistant Legal Advisor Kim Laskoff for their hard work in drafting the amendments. And I'll jump right in. The current, the current ordinance was adopted seventeen years ago and has not been touched since. The ordinance is in serious need of updating due to a dramatic increase in the number of alarms, increased costs, and changing technology. Uh, the purpose of the changes is to reduce the number of false alarms by changing the behavior of alarm users, installers, and monitoring companies. Last year, there were over fourteen thousand false alarms, only two hundred and sixty-six of which were actual crimes. That's less than two percent. Further, uh, over twenty-one thousand employee hours of police department time was wasted on false alarms last year. Uh, that's time that officers could have been spent patrolling their districts, fighting crime, and following up on cases. Uh, that's equivalent to sixteen full-time patrol officers and five full-time emergency communications specialists. Although this is a waste of time in and of itself, that waste is multiplied when officers are standing, um, in the front yard of a residence, scratching their heads, trying to access a property because they can't contact the responder. Uh, finally, uh, when officer safety hazards exist, such as chemical alarms, it is critical, um, for the officers involved to know that, and for the alarm user to disclose that information, and for the monitoring company to provide that information to OPD. Regarding the fiscal impact of the amendments, uh, looking at last year's numbers, uh, the cost of enforcing the ordinance and responding to false alarms, uh, was a little over three hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars. Revenue collected, uh, last year was a hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars, uh, leaving us a shortfall of two hundred and twenty-eight thousand and change. The projected cost for next year, four hundred and sixty-two, almost four hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars, uh, with the changes, uh, that we propose, uh, net revenue should go up to two hundred and seventy-eight to three hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars, uh, leaving us, uh, with a net revenue of about zero. Uh, we anticipate that we'll either lose about thirty-one thousand dollars or be plus twenty-one thousand dollars. What's interesting about this, the changes, we anticipate a ten percent reduction in the number of violations, uh, when we, uh, provide this disincentive to false alarms. The more effective this ordinance becomes in reducing false alarms, the less revenue will be collected. Uh, the bottom line, this ordinance is not a revenue generator. It is only being amended, uh, to change behavior and recover costs and break even. Now into the actual changes themselves. Uh, the good news, uh, for residential alarm users, there's no change to the fine structure. Uh, for commercial, um, they will go from having three freebies, meaning they get three false alarms with no charge, uh, they're gonna be going down to two. Uh, at number three and four, they'll be charged fifty dollars each, and for five or more, one hundred dollars each. Uh, continuing with alarm users, uh, they will be required to register annually, but there's no fee for this. And the reason we need this, um, when officers respond, they need contact information. And frequently, uh, phone numbers will change, emergency contact, uh, information will change. They don't have that information, it slows them down, it wastes time. Um, and it also is an officer safety hazard. Now, if someone fails to renew, uh, and does not provide that information, and our officers respond, uh, they'll be given ten days to update. If after ten days they don't update, they'll be charged fifty dollars. And that's fair and reasonable. If, uh, an alarm user refuses to respond when requested, it'll be a fifty-dollar fine. However, uh, there will be exceptions to that, if there is a medical emergency, if the alarm user is for fifty, further than fifty miles away from their home or business, uh, they won't be charged. Um, and finally, uh, failure to disclose the use of chemical alarms, um, a hundred and fifty dollars. And a chemical alarm, for those who don't know, um, is when pepper spray or tear gas, tear gas is deployed when an alarm goes off. It's illegal in the state of Florida, but it still does happen. Uh, regarding, um, installation companies, there'll be a fifteen-dollar permit fee for new installations, however, existing alarms will be grandfathered in. Alarm activation caused by technician, a hundred and fifty dollars. And technicians do set them off on occasion, uh, they know to call and cancel us. If they don't, it will cost them that much. Uh, knowingly make a false statement, uh, concerning the inspection or repair of an alarm system, two hundred dollars. And any unlicensed companies, um, selling, installing, or servicing systems in the city, two hundred and fifty dollars. Uh, with, also, um, they'll be issued a cease and desist order, uh, by legal. Uh, regarding monitoring companies, uh, failure to verify an alarm system signal as acquired by Florida statute, a hundred and fifty dollars. And what happens, uh, an alarm goes off, a signal is sent to a monitoring company, they're required to call to make sure that a family member didn't set it off, and that we don't show up, guns drawn, anticipating a prowler or burglar. Um, if that happens, it will cost a hundred and fifty dollars to the monitoring company. Uh, dispatching, um, the police department to an alarm site known to be false, a hundred and fifty dollars. Dispatching with incomplete address, also a hundred and fifty dollars. And, uh, again, this is to allow our officers to respond more efficiently. They frequently show up to an apartment building without an apartment number, or to a business without a suite number. And it takes time to figure that out. And then finally, failure to disclose the use of a chemical alarm or other hazard, a hundred and fifty dollars to the monitoring company. I will mention that we conducted two public meetings with representatives from the alarm industry, and many of the recommendations of the industry were incorporated into the ordinance. Our fees and fines are in line with those of the rest of the state, and changes, changes being made are industry standard. Uh, with that, I would like to introduce Steve Bullock. He is the Regional Director of the Central Florida Chapter of Alarm Association of Florida. Uh, and he has a few comments he'd like to share.
Yes, thank you. My name's Steve Bullock. I'm representing the Alarm Association of Florida, and I would like to thank the Orlando Police Department for the great cooperation we've had with them, uh, in amending this ordinance. The, uh, we were told right up front that Orlando City was a kindler, gentler city. And we found that out because the fees they have in here are, are lower, and the, the penalties are less stringent than we were pushing for. So, uh, we think that they have a very good plan overall, that it will reduce, uh, the false alarms, it'll get people more in line, more education to the users, and also put some of the companies that aren't following state regulations on notice as well. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Questions for chief or Mr. Bullock? Commissioner Stewart? Um, chief, tell me a little bit about the appeal process for a, a business.
Good question. Uh, I'd like to bring Audra Nordaby up, uh, who is an expert on the appeal process.
Thank you, chief. Any specific question about the appeal process, or?
We're going from three to two, so we're gonna run to some situations where guys are getting the third one and not understand it until they get their third choice, so. And then the question is, I know that in our business, there's been several issues where the false alarm is actually coming out of the, uh, of the, of the alarm company.
Correct.
So the question is, if I appeal back to you for an alarm, on behalf of the alarm company, where does that kinda go?
Yes, well, the way that your ordinance is currently written, we do not have an appeal process. So approving the amendments will allow us the appeal process. The first appeal would go to the false alarm coordinator, who would then investigate the cause of the alarm. Was it caused by the homeowner, was it caused by a technician, was it a fault on the monitoring center? If the appeal is upheld, there would be no charge for the person appealing. If the appeal is denied, there would be a twenty-five-dollar appealing fee, and then if you, the appellant, is not happy with the decision, there's a second level to appeal, and that would be to the chief of police or his or her designate.
Is that, how is that explained in terms of the paperwork that's received as a false alarm?
It's part of our standard, and it's written in the ordinance, that a copy of the ordinance with all of this outline has to be sent out to every alarm user when there is an activation. The alarm industry has also agreed to assist us by starting to notify their customers of the changes that we've recommended.
And the police officer leaves a statement or a status there which says you may be subject to a fine. How do, how does a company find out, specifically a company more than an individual, but how does a company find out how many he's got within the previous twelve months?
We're hoping with the new software that'll be put in place, that you, the customer, could go online and actually access your account. You would know if you have any outstanding fines, you would be able to update any of your contact information, your registration. your contact information, your registration. The alarm companies would be able to access permitting right online, you would know how many alarms you have outstanding in that 12-month period.
Good, thank you.
Commissioner Ing.
Thank you, Mayor. Chief, can you take the slide back to the fine where the person is unlicensed? Yeah, there we go. The one that was unlicensed to the next slide, I think you went back to. Go back the other way. Where the person is unlicensed, and I think his fine is?
I think it's this slide, Commissioner Ing, the failing to register?
No, not the failing to register. But since we're there, because I had a question for that too, this annual registration, is this for residential and commercial or just commercial?
It's for both, sir.
So that means, me, with my alarm system, I have to register each year with you or with the alarm company?
With us, yes, sir.
Oh, yeah?
And annually, you'd be sent a reminder via email or via mail, just asking for updated information, and that's all we need is updated information. For instance, if your emergency contact, when you're away, is your next-door neighbor and they move, and we don't know it, and we're trying to get in touch with someone, we would have a problem with that.
Oh, okay, that's going to be real interesting, especially because we're looking at all of the alarm systems within residences within the city of Orlando.
Yes, sir, we are.
To comply with this.
And because it will be web-based, it'll be very easy, it'll literally take minutes for someone to update their information.
Okay, but then there's the other slide, and you were just on it, but we kind of went past it. There it is. Unlicensed or improperly licensed company found to be selling, providing, installing, servicing systems within the city limits, $250 per alarm system?
Yes, sir.
That really should be something like $500, so they get the message. I mean, because that's a serious thing, because, you know, unsuspecting residences or businesses, and you've got somebody that doesn't even have a license to do this thing and is really, you know, being a predator to somebody else.
Well, I think, Commissioner, the teeth will kick in because it's per alarm system, so for each alarm system that they install or inspect or service, they'll be fined 250. Besides that, you know, our legal team will issue that cease and desist order prohibiting them from operating in the city any further.
Yeah, I still think $500, though, and that's just me.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Were there questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Good presentation.
Thank you.
Number five, Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the City of Orlando amending chapter 2, article 27 of the Code of the City of Orlando entitled Criminal Nuisance Abatement Board, amending section 2.188.1F to permit certain pain management clinics to be cleared of public nuisance and abated pursuant to section 893.138 Florida statutes, and providing for severability, correction of scrivener's errors, codification, and an effective date.
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Ing, second by Commissioner Sheehan. Is there anyone from the public that would testify on this matter? Discussion among Commissioners, hearing none, all in favor of the motion indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, so the motion carries. That concludes the official business of the Orlando City Council today.